No, no, this is a brand new. I have sold the second brand new off the lot vehicle I've ever bought.
You may have to.
Toyota Camry about twenty.
That's why, because I was not planning for that tonight. I was just here to coast.
Oh, he's got a challenger.
Well, we're getting starting today and Mondays are my day off now, so.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's got.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order at six oh one P M. Say where like things are posted, do we have to?
So it has the normal posting, uh, the Benetton Hall, uh, the post office and at the school.
All right. Uh, roll call, Ben.
Yep.
John.
Here.
Myself, Jason is here, Brad and Keith are absent tonight. We need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's go help. So we're moving right into the, just the presentations.
Uh, we do not have anything for student staff and community recognition for tonight, but I will be definitely pushing more in. And then the thirty sixty day, uh, planning, uh, that's more for just update on events coming up here, so it's more for your, uh, situational awareness, so.
Okay. And then moves on to the policy. Oh, I just lost, policy update for Title One, parents' right to know.
It is, so a- as I've been going into, um, annual notices and what we're required to do, I noticed that we were missing one item that is required for Title One schools, which, which we are. And that is that, um, you know, parents' right to know, um, about teacher qualifications, you know, specifically with core instruction areas. And, uh, got information from our Neil and Rep Onness, um, just to make sure that we have it, uh, on our, in our policies.
Do you, you say we need some?
I, I would prefer if, if we can take action on that tonight, just so we have that succinct and we can get all of our notifications up to speed.
So is there a motion to approve that policy as presented?
Be your turn, John.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, baseball activity fundraiser approval. So this is.
Would you like me to speak on that?
I don't know what's on your hair. Yes.
It is the same fundraiser we've done for the entire fundraiser, so the discount that we've been selling. So nothing, nothing new to what we've done over the last.
So the, the uniform type items, we normally don't cover that or?
Well, it would be socks and stirrups and hats, those things that we have to have as a, as a uniform, like our uniform budget would cover for baseball pants and insurance.
Okay.
It doesn't cover those other pieces, but we still need hats.
Okay.
And I'm not asking guys to turn hats at the end of the year or socks or those things, so those are.
Right, right.
Those that we need to account for every year.
Okay.
Um, and then our, our trip to the Dells is also part of it.
So, uh, I guess the question comes to mind is, is, you know, should the district be covering costs, even though, even though there are something that they're not gonna turn back in, it's still a uniform, I don't think.
I mean, possibly, but at the same time, we've, we do fundraisers to be able to account for those things and, um, if it's something that we see that the budget should be a little bit higher for, for that. So be it, but I, you know, I, I can't, I couldn't just unilaterally say, well, baseball budget for uniforms needs to be higher because we have more pieces that we need to have toward uniform. Obviously stock, we need to have socks, you know, we need to have hats, but.
What's the profit margin per disco card?
Um, if we, there's certain thresholds, we've usually gotten to that fifty percent number for, for profit.
It also means I should probably start using the one I bought last year.
Yeah, same here. Are you buyers? Are you sharing it with softball again this year or just baseball?
No, it'll just be a baseball fundraiser. A number of years ago, well, that, probably the last time we shared was probably twenty nineteen, um, baseball softball with the same fundraiser. But after that point, once we co-opted with baseball softball, um, we kind of went our own ways as far as fundraisers were concerned, so. So yeah, we've been doing this, uh, discount card, well, probably close to eight, ten years now.
I would say closer to ten, because I've been here eight and a half and I've bought a card every year.
Well, because I know we've talked about trying to cut down on fundraisers, especially if it's for things that, you know, maybe the district shouldn't be paying for. So I, I don't know, anybody else has any thoughts on that?
This is usually one the community seems to like too because it's a discount card?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't.
I mean, if someone came to me with one of those discount cards, which to me are worthless, I'd just say, here, just take the money, keep the card and sell it somewhere else because it's, you know, two for one on a subway or s- I don't even know what they are anymore, but.
Like Paul's Four Hoes, Frannies.
Are they, they're not, they're not.
It's a lot, I mean, there are some other, like, maybe Hardee's and Quick Trick, but it's a lot of, you know, Paul's Four Hoes, the Palm.
Soft Pines, Buckhorn.
Soft Pines, yeah.
Okay.
The bigger ticket, the bigger ticket ones are, are local. I know this year, um, uh, Hogwild has two of the big ones, Franny Cades has one.
Oh, okay, I guess I've never seen the ones here, so.
And I guess if it's, uh, to me, if it's something that we want to change for the future, I mean, uh, obviously we have a lot of work to do when it comes to fundraising and I will, you know, our guys are willing to do that. But we just gotta have a direction, right? I hope this year we can move ahead with it, but.
I think, but I think for this year you could leave it, but I think to your point, John, what would be really nice to see is a list of, not just for the sports, I think that list of what we are fundraising for in the school and, like where those things are, because quite honestly, I don't, I don't know, and sometimes we, I know that the kids get it wrong, because I'll ask them what it's for, then they'll tell me, and I'm like, that's not what we talked about. At the board meeting.
Right.
Um, you know, like, so kind of correcting them, but I think seeing all of that list as a whole and where, like, like I say, at church, some things, it's really nice to actually fundraise for, for, because it's another way of getting the community involved. And then there are other things that it's like, that's really, we shouldn't really be doing that, that should be self-supported, it's a state, so I think of things that way, I'd like to see that bigger list and.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that's something we could get over the summer or something when the school year's done.
Because it sounds like what you're saying, Nate, with the uniforms too, is it's trying to also be, have an equitable piece, so that it's like, we're supplying the same thing for volleyball.
I was just gonna say for volleyball, we need spandex, so if we're going that way with baseball, then I'd be requiring spandex, we bought any socks and knee pads for our players, you know, as well, but that's another piece, you know, if that's where we're going in the sports world, um, you know, we need those for volleyball, we need, we can't. Baseball soft.
Right, right, right.
Baseball softball nets, I mean. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So anyway.
Okay.
So before we get too far, just if you guys are chiming in, which is awesome, please head up to this, okay, just so to make sure people are hearing that stuff, okay?
All right, so.
All right. Are we?
Make a motion on this one?
This, this one is due to start on the day of our regular board meeting.
So is there a motion to approve the baseball activity fundraiser?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Yeah, we can't disrupt anything this year.
Right.
Backstop padding. You think you'd get a few things up on the dock here, so.
You want me to just stay here?
It looks like you're, you've got like the next five and a half minutes, so.
Awesome, I'll get comfortable. Um, yeah, that was just something that came up, uh, looking at facilities, um, the padding at the backstop down at the downtown field is, is falling apart. Um, and it's, we've tried to cobble it together as best we could for the last number of years, um, this would be a, a fix to that, and I know up here there isn't really any, and. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but the backstop is kind of curling up on the little van. On the, so that's kind of a safety issue, um, on the softball field here.
So you're looking for the softball field here or one for both, um, and then what are we responsible for at? As someone who pulls up and gets to look at the ballpark.
Correct.
When it comes to business fifty-three, like, what are we responsible for and what is the village technically responsible for?
That's a really good question, and I don't have all of the answers to what is the, what is the village responsible for at the village field, um, and I'm looking at it as, as a, just an issue that just needs fixing.
Yeah.
And is it something that we can bring to the village?
Well, I, we put in the scoreboards with the Merzurki money a while ago, but like, buildings need to be painted down there, the last time some of it was painted, we do that as a service project.
There's a lot of needs and my gut feeling without really doing any research is that the village does not spend a lot of time or energy.
They, they don't.
On the field and.
But there are tournaments that are held there, what?
Someone's gonna ask us, because I do know the answers.
Can you?
I mean, I know.
Just, just slide another chair up there.
Here, I'll just.
Here.
Just don't get too close to it.
Share the mic, yeah.
Because I, I deal with the youth baseball and softball a lot, um, last year I had a very long conversation about all of the paintings, um, the door handles there that I got replaced. Um, if we bring it to them, they are more than willing to help pay and fund what they can to fix up that field. They're, they're not gonna take full responsibility on, you know, doing everything, but like the light bulbs, they, you know, have purchased all of those and will replace those as needed in the, the lights. They just have not, never, well, I shouldn't say never, in a long time haven't been asked to help fund and with it, but they do have money set aside to help out with what we possibly could bring to them.
Because I feel like the downtown field should be like a shared cost, I don't think we should not pay for some stuff.
Right.
But, I mean, this one is ours, so that makes sense, but I have a issue with the number of other teams and practices and things that get held down there that are using that, that we shouldn't be paying for all of that.
I think if we came up with a list, or whoever is doing it, came up with a list and approached them at one of their meetings and a, you know, with a quote of what we're asking, how much I think they'd be willing to put some.
Remind me, is that the town or the village?
Village, village.
The village, okay.
Yeah.
So, so is the padding, did you need three per backstop, or you had, there's three on?
Yeah, when I, when I measured it last fall, the, the, it would be three sections that we need across.
For each field?
Uh, I, I did not look at the softball field, the softball field would be less, because it's, I think it's only two sections instead of three.
And is that one, will that make it through this season or?
Well, there isn't anything down there current.
Oh, okay.
So we need something down there, so.
Well, and what, why don't we, you know, approve the, the purchase for our field and, um, I mean, someone needs to go to the village and do an ask there.
We don't even need to approve this tonight, we'll, can we tell our regular meeting?
But if we go to the village and say, this is your field, we use it, let's split the cost for the, the backstop padding, I don't, I don't think we'd get pushback.
Do we have time? Does that fit your timeline for the first baseball game there?
Possibly, I don't know.
And then is that money coming from the Merzurki money or is that coming?
That would be one of the places, yeah.
My suggestion would be to order.
Order it and then go to the village.
And then go to the village, if the village contributes, great, if not.
Okay.
Well, and then we could take them down after, at the end of the season.
Right, that, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it'll.
Frank, frankly.
Mike, Mike, Mark, Mike.
Well, and I'm even wondering with the downtown one, can we split that with the youth? Is there a way to do that three ways, or I don't know what the youth league is. Because you guys probably have like no budget. No, you probably don't have a budget.
Um, that's so, we could, you could approach us on our, you know, youth board and try to figure out how to, because I mean, we utilize that downtown field as well, um, just as much or more than the high school, um, high school teams, but, you know, so do the bar league softball players as well, you know, and they have an organization themselves, so I mean, should they be responsible for?
That's.
Yes, I think we would do a lot of cost sharing, but yeah, maybe, yeah, the easy, easy button is just buy them.
And then figure out or see if others will pay.
Yeah, let's just do the village.
Probably less likely to, well, you already bought them, why should we kick in, but I, who knows?
Do the other teams need them, or are we the only ones that need them?
Other teams.
Bart, does part of the softball players need a backstop?
It wouldn't be that big of a deal for softball, but part of the reason why it's necessary is that the backstop is so short there, so by putting a pad there, it keeps the ball from flowing back.
Third baseline or whatever, yeah.
So it serves to lengthen the backstop where it can't be.
Yeah.
Not an issue for slow pitch softball.
Would you like to approve tonight or do you wanna wait?
No, the, the, uh, the only items that were necessary, uh, the first two and then we'll have to make a decision on next month's.
Got it, all right.
So that one will go to the next meeting. Spring athletic cooperative agreements.
So our spring cooperative agreements for, um, our, spring sports that we have are good through, um, this spring and the next, so they won't need to be approved until, uh, the spring of twenty twenty-five. So, um, submitted by June first, so we are good on spring cooperative agreements, uh, for this year. All of our cooperative agreements unless the W I A changes it, will be all in the same, uh, school year, so next year we'll have football and cross country to renew at the end of the fall, we'll have baseball, softball and track to renew at the end of the spring. So it helps that they're all the same year, so we don't miss anything.
Right, and then the, the, uh, the other information, we're looking at, uh, some potentials here.
Yeah, um, as we had talked about, uh, adding some golf possibilities, I reached out to, uh, four schools, um, in regards to boys golf. Three of them said that they already had large teams that, and were not interested in the co-op to reduce play for their, um, existing teams. Um, Northwestern was the only school that kind of gave a maybe that they would look into it, so that's kind of where we're at as far as, uh, a potential golf co-op would be, would be concerned. Northwestern let me know next week, or last week, that they would do some talking with their coaches, but they too said that they have like over twenty-seven kids and only one coach, so it would, it would not be very easy.
So does a co-op mean it's a fifty-fifty cost share, even if you only have maybe one golfer versus twenty in the other school, or?
Well, what a lot of schools will end up doing is, well.
Pro rata?
It will, it, they'll usually take the total cost and divide it by the number of players and then that's our share. So whatever that may be, when I reached out to Hayward regarding, um, girls hockey, that's what they kind of gave me the breakdown of what it would be.
Yeah.
Per, per athlete that's participating, so.
Right. No, it's not, and, and, and that doesn't, that doesn't surprise me, which, uh, you were quoted based off in the twenty-two, twenty-three, it was, uh, three thousand two hundred forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
That was the share per hockey, yeah. And hi- I mean, hockey's an expensive sport.
It is.
I think when I reached out to Superior, it was in the tens of thousands of dollars.
Got there.
Per athlete, because when you're looking at ring time and equipment, it's, it's costly, now golf would definitely not be as expensive, but.
Right.
You know, I think our cooperative agreements are, for football, what is it, one fifty per athlete? So it's a, a small number compared to what.
Right.
We would pay for other sports.
One fifty plus transportation.
Transportation.
So this is just an item too, to consider at the next regular board meeting?
It's, it's stuff, stuff to, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think it was just more of getting information, you know, for the future, because, uh, you know, one, one of the questions that came up was regarding the golf club and then, you know, that potential for a cooperative agreement, so. Um, and then equitable pieces, because we know we have, uh, young ladies that are playing hockey and want to continue that, um, so it's getting more information for us to explore, so.
And it's the high jump.
Yeah, no other questions on the springs?
There's other questions on the athletic cooperative agreements? No other questions, let's move on to the high jump mat purchase.
Yeah, so I, I was really hoping that Shannon would be here, I know she, uh, was really reconsidering things here as far as, you know, the expense towards, uh, the whole setup, uh, simply because it's, you know, you don't have a, a huge number of, of athletes that would be participating in, but looking at that, you know, potential, you know, option for, for students that are either dual sport or, or whatnot, because it's relatively. Yeah, I mean, you, you can, you can do your technique and it's, it, it doesn't require a huge mug of time, so to speak, and you can be a little more flexible with your practice times and whatnot, so.
I, I don't quite understand what you're saying.
With, with the high jump, you can be a little more flexible in your, the amount of practice timing you're getting.
Oh, got it.
So it's, yeah, that potential, you could have more dual sport involvement too, but, uh, the, where we run into issues is, A, where we put it, uh, having some conversation with Northwood, Northwood, um, storage and covering expense, not interested, so.
Covering the, half the cost of this?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I, can you say, you talked to their A D, they're not interested?
That's, it was going through them as well as the superintendent, so, just now, and there, it's, it's spurring some other conversation regarding cooperative stuff, so. I, that's the, the initial response that I've received already, but we'll see where things go after us, but it, it still comes down to where, where are we, where would we put it to practice? We don't really have a good flat spot here unless we're putting it in the parking lot. Um, and then where, where do we store it?
They're, and they're really hard to move.
It is, it's, it's a beast, it's a beast.
Heavy, heavy mats, yes.
So I, I don't know, I mean, that's, I, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, if this is something that, you know, that maybe we, we're not necessarily pulling, you know.
We're not ready for it.
Pulling, uh, for this right this instant and trying to shake this up for a minute, so.
So let me push back on that.
Yeah, no, that's.
So we had a high school senior last year who, who was on our track team, who, who did high jump.
Right.
And I don't quite have the exact measurements, but, but missed out on state by two inches. Except you think, what if he would have been able to practice? You know, if, part of it frustrates me is if we're gonna do something, we can't use duct tape and baling twine, if we're gonna have a track team, then we need to have a track team that pursues excellence. Um, and I think, you know, what, how many kids are gonna be interested? Well, it's hard to get kids interested if we don't have the equipment.
You're right.
So, you know, let's, the easiest storage, it's fine to, it's fine to use trailer, use box trailer.
Then you're talking a lot more money, I mean, I, I, I understand how we're.
What, three to five grand for a used one?
Well, then what are you looking at?
Eight grand to start for the mat.
So.
I got a nice one for three at an auction.
I partly, I, partly I think it's, it's, and this is where I, what I don't understand, you know, there's obviously conversations and wheels within wheels here, so I get that there are things that, if we're in a co-op, we share the cost. That's, that was part of the assumption.
Which we have to be cautious of, because when it comes down to football then, if they want us to start sharing the cost of all of the equipment that they have for football.
It, it gets a little more complex, so.
And fitting all these items in our budget.
Right.
Well, it might come from the budget, we also have the, you know, there's, I don't want to say no before we've asked all the questions.
And that, and that's exactly why, why we're bringing this here, and, you know, if, if there are specific questions that we have and we don't have answers for right now, that's where it gives us the time to find it and come back in our next meeting here.
Is there another like place that has that, that we could rent some time for those high jumpers this year and give that time to figure out? Because it's more than just buying a mat, if it was just buying a mat, it's no, but, whatever, but let me, like, those bigger questions, that's not gonna happen for the track season this year. So is there, is there something like that through, I don't know, Superior or U W S or?
I, I know that our track team has utilized U W S for the past couple of years in gaining at least some access, whether it was early season, just being able to get some running on the short ovals in.
Right.
And then trying to do some of the jumping pieces, I, I know that they've used that, obviously things are probably gonna be a little bit different this year when everyone's gonna be outside, you know, today was the first day of practice and I'm sure they were out, out running outdoors, so, um, are there other schools that would have outdoor facilities that we could? I, I, that I don't, that I don't know.
I don't know what that would be.
You don't, do they have the facilities, sure, are they gonna be willing to have us come and use them that, that I can?
Because I think that would be something to approach just for this year and then have that bigger conversation about those bigger piece things, especially as it involves, it's not just us, it's the bigger co-op picture, because I mean, the, a part of the co-op thing then too, it becomes like, who owns it? You know, if you're camping and then.
Right, who's got responsibility for?
That, that piece too, right, so there's a lot more logistics that are part of it, and so what's the, what's the temporary to meet the needs this year for the long term, so I think seeing some of those or pursuing some of that might be worthwhile. Any other questions about the high jump?
I can't imagine U W Superior would not be cooperative in allowing some use, you know.
They have, and I was wondering like, if you have a couple of high jumpers, is there something that you can work out, like, and what are those parameters, because it might, you can't just be up there by yourself, right? So like, wondering what, if there's, if there's a cost, but then also some of those parameters, so you don't have a kid that just is like, yeah, I'm just gonna go up there and.
Yeah, not jumping, some, some form of supervision, yeah.
By themselves, you know.
Yeah, and what we're willing to do, I, Shannon, Shannon was mentioning that a young fellow is more than willing to volunteer his time to assist with coaching and whatnot, which, which is great, you know, it adds, adds some of that, uh, support and, and technique, but we gotta explore all of this, so.
Any other questions on the high jump mat? All right, and we'll move on to the next one, which is golf club expenses. But it looks like there's some other.
So, part, part of the, part of this discussion and, and stuff that came up was, was talking about, you know, if, if we went, if we went through with this, you know, what, what would we be paying an advisor, and, and, you know, what I put on there is, you know, taking a look at, you know, your varsity and assistant for track, what those, what, what, uh, those costs are for, for, uh, your coaches and then your basketball middle school. I mean, that, I mean, there's not really anything comparable when it comes to that spring sport, but it, it gives you, you know, a highlight, you know, with the number of events, if we're talking, you know, four events, you know, twenty, twenty dollars per golfer, per event. And, you know, you look at, at, uh, the closest thing for, you know, coaches based on number of events, I mean, that's kind of where this falls, so, I mean, just trying to give some, some more context to the discussion that we had previously.
So are we still considering this as a varsity sport or a club sport?
Club, the, it would have to be club this year.
Yeah, it could not be a vars, uh, we couldn't host it as a varsity sport this year through W I A because we would have had to declare that.
Right.
Prior to this.
But for future, I mean, or is it on the table for?
I think at this point we're just talking about for this spring.
Okay.
You know.
That's where the conversation of co-opping with other schools is that bigger picture for, because we don't have the capability of having that on our. That's where the conversation of co-opping with other schools is that bigger picture for, because we don't have the capability of having that on our own.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if this fits under club rules, and, you know, why not? I'd have to re-look all the parameters.
Because we already approved the club, right? Did we approve that last one?
I don't think so.
I don't know.
We just talked about it.
We did not, because there, there were a number of questions, you know, about the expenses that were with it, and that's where we're coming back with more information.
Perfect.
Are there pieces that we still need to come up with, you know, so.
Do we have other clubs in this school? Art club, uh?
There was like a fishing club at one point, I don't know if there's still.
Right.
Chess club.
The chess club is still, but those are.
There's a few others.
They have an advisor.
Those are, are.
In our school.
Self-funded.
Right.
They do their fundraising to support their club costs, so those are not district costs.
So I'm just wondering if there's, you know, some more information that, uh, that is needed for, for this discussion as we go into, uh, regular board meeting or?
So then you're talking, are you talking transportation or not transportation? Are you talking culture, not coaching? How far do you go if it's one or two athletes?
Is it legit to have parents be responsi- in thi- in this setting, a club event that is off-site activity? Can we say, parents, you're responsible to get your kid there?
Well, I think that's why we have to look at what the rules are on a club sport, because, I mean, they're different certainly from, you know, a school-sponsored sport. I, just off the top of my head, I don't know what they are, but, um, there's certainly less support than a regular.
Yeah, I mean, this would be a little bit different than, I mean, because this is a W I A sponsored sport, we just aren't having it be a sponsored sport for us.
Right.
I think our, our conference athletic directors are allowing some participation. So does it really fall under a, a club-like trap shooting would fall under, that's, again, that's a non-W I A sponsored sport that operates as clubs in a, in a lot of schools, you know, this is maybe a little bit different than that. So it's, it's really just providing by our conference A D.'s and admin for the kids to participate, so.
So.
It would have to be the advisor or the, um, parent, even if they're driving age, if that's.
Right.
For that kind of thing, I mean, I could, you get into that too.
Right, and I, and I think that would be wise of us to have, and provide that for transportation if we're, if we're gonna move forward with it, simply because if we're, if we're gonna pay advisor, that they would do the transport, and I think that would cover some liability issues, so.
So Ike was part of the Spooner Ski Club. Which is a, is that a, that's a, it's a club sport?
It's, it's truly a club, but it does not have W I A sanctioning, that's where it's a little bit different.
So we, because he, he was released from school early to get down there on time, drove himself. But you're saying because this student would be going to a W I A event, it puts extra.
It, that, that would be, off the top of my head, that's where I've.
How would we get those answers?
I, I think that's just, we, we need to reach out.
I, I also wonder how that, if we're, if the goal is to co-op with someone next year too, how you're setting this club for this year to be in line with what the expectations are gonna be for those co-op sports, like when we co-op with football and cross-country, those kinds of piece, parameters as well.
Well, and we've already had, what, three hard noes, and so is this just Northwestern is the one that's still?
Out of the.
And if they say no, I mean, then there is no co-op.
That's right.
We don't have to worry about that piece, but, um.
So at our extracurricular meeting, I think December, this was, one student wrote a letter and said, would you, can we do this? It was one student. Are we able to say yes to that one student without having to say yes to everyone else in the building?
Not if we're gonna pay for the fees.
No, but that's part of my, I, but that's part of the question is, can we say, you know what, this is so, we're, we're already into the fiscal year?
I think then you say no.
Why though? Why can't, if, if mom's willing to drive the one student? Because part of it is gonna be, they're gonna miss some school, so somewhere, when we give our blessing, we're saying, okay, it's not, you're, you're not missing, you're, you missing school is the same as a baseball team getting out early to miss school, so there, there's a value of us saying we're for this. But if it's only one student and mom's driving the one student?
But possibly, Nate said there was possibly one or two other ones that were maybe interested.
Well, that's my question though, is do.
Well, it's the same with the high, high jump, you, if, you probably have one student, but there may be others that if, you know, he starts doing it or tee-to-tee or whatever, they attract others, but, I mean, we're slicing our pie pretty thin as it is with our athletics. I mean, we're barely fielding the girls' basketball, and that'll get better, and so, and there'll be an ebb and flow to all of this, but, you know, we gotta be careful, we don't continue to slice off.
I guess my pushback to that, John, that's a different, is we have, we don't even have fifty percent participation of our student, our boys in, in one sport, so I, I don't know that I wanna, I think that's a different issue.
Yeah.
Um, we gotta increase our, we got, we got plenty of stu- we have plenty of student athletes. They're just not participating.
Well, then they're not a student athlete.
We have, we, we have plenty of.
I don't know if I completely agree with that, I, I mean, I, I think we have good participation, but I, there's a lot of kids that I see walk the halls here that would never participate in, in sports.
And some budgetary, it's strange too.
Right.
Because that's not for every student, so what, what I recommend, let's come back to this, um, I, I think, if, if anything, just trying to clarify anything with club sport regulations as far as participating in W I A, if there's any restrictions, limitations, or liabilities that we have to be concerned about in that.
So when I did talk to W I A prior to this, uh, regarding the potential of having golf, they said that we have the local control to have our golfer, or golfers participate in events, um, but they are not able to participate in the tournament.
Right.
So, so we have already been given permission from W I A to have individuals participate just now that the tournament's here.
Yeah, and, and to me, it's, the last thing is just that liability piece, do, do we have to be concerned about that? Because then that's gonna dictate transportation or not, so.
So for our next meeting, what, I think the other question that would be helpful is, I, I believe you said there's maybe four conference golf meets?
Four is the number that the conference A D.'s told me.
So, that, that whole, like, if we're gonna give an advisor a stipend, is it, are they just, they're just driving the students to four events, or are we hosting practices somewhere? So whatever, I, somewhere along the way, someone's just gotta make a decision that says, here's the paper plan.
Probably up between the advisor and the golfer.
Well, that, I think that affects how much we're paying the advisor. If we're paying somebody for four nights versus we want two practices a, a week with some measure of skilled coaching.
And then I think that falls into, like, some of those other things about, like, the other clubs that were self-funded, even when I was at, um, Ellsworth, they, the school cho- the school board chose to defund the tennis team, the boys' tennis team, so the boys' tennis team lobbied, and we fundraised to keep, you know, it as a school sport. Which is ironic, because it's like the least expensive sport in the school, but.
They just need to cut a little bit of money.
Yeah, right, so like, but I mean, we ended up fundraising all of, all of our money to pay our coach and our travel and all of that stuff to stay as a school sport.
Okay. So we've got just a couple of questions.
Yeah.
To pro. No problems?
All right. That's it for sports-related stuff, health course credit, at least as far as I can tell, yes.
Would you like, Nate, would you like to talk about the food service school area?
No.
Okay, just, just wanted to give you that.
Sierra health course credit requirement.
They have their, they have your presentation, so, see, there's a presentation that says Sierra, and then the other one is my, just some recommendations, kind of to summarize.
Did that just get added?
I, the, my P D F and presentation, probably, because I just shared the policy.
Okay, so I looked this afternoon.
When I finalized the presentation.
Okay.
Okay, um, I guess though I'm here to get guidance, um, some questions answered and things to consider for the health classes that we have here. Um, so I kinda just put a little, um, synopsis, I guess, of what has been happening. Last year, Health eleven was a new class that started, um, it was an elective last year, it is now an elective for the second year in a row. It is for eleventh graders, um, that's the year that was recommended to add this, um, it's a half a credit. We meet every day of the week in, um, second semester of the year. Current topics, so there is no, I was never given, uh, you know, here's a curriculum, here's your topics, we want you to discuss. It was here, you are now teaching a Health eleven, you know, do which, now I don't wanna say do which please, but figure out what, you know, you think the best avenue is um, for these eleventh graders. So what we talked about last year and what we are talking about this year, um, here are some just topics. Public speaking, um, just have students do presentations with elementary kids, um, we are getting into healthy grocery shopping, um, along with that of doing that on a budget as well, um, foundations of a healthy relationship, not health relationship. Um, meal planning and prepping, um, things like, you know, food storage with time restraints, um, availability that you have to certain foods and appliances. Um, social skills, whether that's with your roommates, employees, your employers, coworkers, classmates, family. Um, coping mechanisms for mental, emotional, and physical health, um, fire safety, and then on the gold, uh, balanced nutrition, so.
And I'm sorry, did you mention that you kinda garnered some of these topics from the?
I'm getting there.
Okay, yes, sorry.
Um, that's okay, and some of these, um, like the foundations of a healthy relationship, coping mechanism, um, social skills are kind of review from what we do in Health nine, um, so I do have a curriculum for that, we bought a textbook, um, last year, at the beginning of the year last year, so it's kind of, we revisited that, um, but we've gone a little bit deeper into those. But these other ones are, you know, just ones that the students have been interested in, um, or what I felt would really work post-high school um, for these students. So in regards, I'm gonna kinda skip around on this, um, this slideshow, but in regards to Health eleven, I guess I'm just looking really for guidance and a curriculum, what, what, because after two years, you know, it's going to, I think, be required starting next school year. But I, I need a curriculum, I need, what topics are we talking about, um, what are we calling this? Is it, you know, a technical health class? Um, where we talk about, you know, A T O D, um, you know, review CPR and, um, you know, A E D, things like that, first aid? Or are we going, you know, more on the lines of what I have, you know, Health for Life, you know, kind of things post-high school? So for the Health eleven, I, I, my ask, or I don't even know, however you wanna put it, is asking for some guidelines or to find a curriculum or, you know, give me topics that we're talking about, um, or that you'd like to see talking about, and I don't know, you know, I don't know if this is part of the H G and D committee members need to approve that, you know, I don't know where we're at, who needs to, who needs to do it, I just know this was the meeting I needed to come to, to talk about this.
So you're not asking for, to make it mandatory, state laws saying?
No, the district, no, the district, so the district added a Health eleven last year. H G and D committee recommended it to the school board, I believe, and school board approved it as my understanding.
No.
Yeah, it was in the final report of the Human Growth and Development Committee report that they gave, the recommendations.
Okay, that was pre-John, I believe.
All right.
It might have been, yeah.
P J. It was in the spring of twenty-two.
So, yeah, it's not a state, it's a district, it's a district, um, request, I guess, recommendation for this Health eleven.
But, but the district did provide a curriculum.
I don't.
Just go forth and do healthy things with our eleventh graders.
Well, we did, the ninth grade has a curriculum, and part of that is researching to see if they have other books that we could, so there's some scope and sequence.
So, I really like that it's, I think it was, because in the eleventh grade, you start, you're looking at colleges, or you're starting to think about what's after high school, so I like that there's a focus of like, kinda like, how do you do these things on your own, and how do you think about these things, because you may not have to do that, or even think about that as part of your bigger picture?
I know, you know, last year I really wanted to cook with these students, but I didn't have the resources to do that, you know, I don't, another part of mine is that I don't have a budget for my health classes. I have budget for FIED, but that barely will get me my FIED, FIED equipment, let alone budget, you know, for any supplies or anything that, you know, any field experiences that, you know, things like that. Because a lot of these kids don't know how to cook, they don't, you know, they really don't, and they're asking, how do I, how can I, you know, make with whatever I have in my refrigerator and make something? And that's where, you know, so, another topic that.
So what is the time to, to do a half-credit? Is it like one semester?
It's one semester, two quarters, yeah.
Every day. Every day.
Yeah, so we meet every day, Monday through Friday, for a whole semester, and that's a half of a credit.
So where do you do it, if you don't have a classroom?
Well, I end up, have been finding my own classroom, so I'm taking over teachers' prep time to use their classroom, that is also another thing on my concerned PowerPoint is a classroom would be, yeah.
Holly, oh, sorry.
Nope, go ahead, because I was gonna go on to the next.
Were you on Human Growth and Development Committee? I was on that committee.
Yep.
There was a reason why we thought it was a good idea to add this class, but I've slept a few times since.
Exactly what she's saying, wanted to have that health class instead of just in fifth grade and just in ninth grade.
But I think, were we looking at?
Um, we wanted, like, to send them out, and, exactly what she's doing.
But I thought we were looking at state standards, or there was.
You were looking to do a comprehensive K through twelve.
Yeah.
I know that is where the, this has been trying to go towards with this health.
So, because I believe, where I'm going with that, we had these, they happen to be yellow, so how's that, what a random detail to remember. But there was, it was a, it was like a spreadsheet that, like, here's what you wanna hit if you're gonna do a K twelve. So I think that to me answers the, well, what should we talk about?
That's great, but I don't know where it is, I've never seen anything.
But remember that Human Growth and Development is just a piece of health class.
Yeah.
Correct.
It's just like a.
But I thought, somewhere along the way, I thought we saw this, the macro picture of, here are the, here are the big topics of, for health, some of it's Human Growth and Development.
Yep.
Uh, and the, I wonder if the chair of that committee would have that information?
I just shared the report with John, I can reshare it, if, maybe it might be in an appendix there.
Should be a, a.
So what, one of the recommendations that came out is, yes, the scope and sequence, so that's where I know you've contacted our current curriculum people to see for the middle school and for the eleventh grade what's available, because it'd be nice to have some consistency. So what came out of the Human Growth and Development component of health is that the kids will have their talk in fifth grade, they will have some kind of rotation in middle school, and then they have their ninth grade, which we have now, and then we expanded to the eleventh grade. It had been optional, thus long, it was, next year is when we slated it to go into credit requirement. And that was approved by the school board, those recommendations. Um, in middle school, we did add the leadership class, that's not technically in the, cleanly under the health umbrella, but it definitely touches on some topics.
Sure.
So I think we're gonna grow from that to expand further.
The conversation about the K twelve thing is that there's, there are already aspects of that that are just part of generals.
Right.
Yep.
Working with humans.
Right, well, and just like teaching English or math, there's standards, um, there's health standards.
That's the word.
But it, it's really nice to have a, a program, like we, you know, buy a program for, a packaged thing for ELA, we have one for ninth grade.
Yep, I was gonna say, we have a curriculum and a textbook, I should have brought, um, the high school, the high school one, uh, but, you know, there is a, a textbook that is, so they classify ninth through twelfth as high school, and then sixth through eighth is called teen health, and then all elementary, I have all, all of these books in my office, I got samples of them. Each elementary grade has their own, um, health textbook, so it's age-appropriate, um, for them, so we have a curriculum. The high school one, it really, I, I just don't think it's appropriate for the eleventh grade, as in it's really geared towards younger. The, the younger, right, oh, yeah, it's, so, look, but I, you know, I've, I've hit on some of those, like, foundations of healthy relationships, social skills, you know, things like that. I just think we could, it would be beneficial to maybe look at other materials that would really focus on, you know, the post-high school or, you know, independent, you know, things, yeah, lifestyle.
Lifestyle, healthy lifestyle.
And then if that's the case, do, is it a health class or it? And then if that's the case, do, is it a Health class or is it a life skills class? You know, then, you know, that's where the naming of it and?
I, I, I will tell you, everything that you're mentioning, your current topics usually falls under a face class.
Yeah.
Family and consumer ed classes.
It writes, right. Yeah.
So we can access this textbook on that link you have?
So that one is just for the teen health. I do have the, the link.
Not the teen years and relationships?
This is the middle school.
That's the middle school one, so that's, now, I'll get into the, this middle school, so then, um, I.
Oh, I see, I got it, hell, six, seven, eight, okay.
Yeah, so then my other thing is, is adding on, you know, looking at adding on Health in sixth, seventh and eighth grade in that middle school. So here's their Health textbook, and then there's a separate textbook that is called Teen Years with Relationships and Sexuality, which is a lot of the H G and D, um, topics, um, and those opt-out options that families have it too. That link right there, the password, is how you can see that one online, and they are sending me a hard copy of that one, because now we're looking into that for the middle school, um, the middle school section.
Oh, we're not using it now?
Not, no, because we've only had Health at ninth grade and eleventh for the last two. So now, next year, looking at adding rotation into, for the middle school students. So I, I wanted to put that on there so you could see it. I don't know how much, do they, I, you know, this, the middle school, I don't know who to talk to about, you know, what I, this is, we wanna add, we wanna add this, I think it's appropriate. I have a lot of the teachers asking, in fact, you know, hey, could you come at the beginning of the school year and have this conversation? And then come at the end of the school year, and then maybe in the middle, do you know what I mean? You know, it's.
Well, so we don't have Health six, seven, eight.
No, we do not.
My apologies, that took me a minute to pick up.
So we do not have that yet.
So the way it would work for middle school is during the exploratory hour, they currently have art, music, shop and keyboarding, no?
Yep, keyboarding is part of, or was, or make your space.
No, nope, that's part of the band hour thing. So they have four, a different class every quarter, environment, no, I don't know. Anyway, and so then we might just add a fifth one in, that just means instead of nine weeks, it's what, seven weeks long? So they, in sixth grade, they'd get a, a chunk of Health, in seventh grade, they'd get a chunk of Health and in eighth grade, cause they have the rotations every year. So that's where that book, the teen book would probably divide it up into three grade levels-ish. I mean, that's a little work on, looking at standards and?
But the other part of that is, if we add this, are we talking a full Health class or just our H G and D topics? Because those are two different, there are a bunch of other topics in Health, that, you know, alcohol, tobacco, um, ATOD, um, CPR and AED. No, those aren't H G and D topics. So adding sixth, seventh and eighth, are we talking full-on Health or are we just talking H G and D topics? That, you know, there are a lot of them, and they're all in here, you know, and in the other book too. What are, what are, what are we doing? What, what are we asking? What do you want me to do?
I think that it would really benefit if we spent some time looking at the Health standards and, cause some of this is.
I have a print in my office, I look it up on a daily basis.
Right, but I mean, let's, we can maybe kinda do a little mapping with what would be appropriate, cause then maybe we could find the right tool to help with.
I just don't know who needs to approve that, I, you know, is this committee the one that approves it, or is it school board, or is it H G and D committee? Where are we at? What do we do?
So, so a committee of the whole is the board?
Right, okay.
So, so, yeah, so it would come here. And, and what, what we, what I'm gonna say is, yes, we need to take a look at your resource, and let's get a, kind of like a scope and sequence set.
Yep.
That, that we can bring back here.
And there is, I should've attached it, and I still could if it goes on there, but she did send me, there is a link of a scope and sequence as well. I can, I can attach it on there for you guys to see, you'd be able to see that too.
I think taking that, like, scope and sequence and some of those, um, standards.
Yep.
That's the word I was looking for. Standards, and then looking back at what some of those recommendations were from all that work that the Human Growth and Development Committee did, cause there may be, like, some of that, those parameters in there, because I know that was, Human Growth and Development was part of a bigger picture thing too, in those, in those presentations that, that were given to us from that committee, it wasn't, like, it is Human Growth and Development, but it's also the bigger picture. I, I think the more, I think part of it is, how do we give a holistic approach that is meaningful in seven weeks? Or useful, like, what are those things gonna be? And those things might also change from year to year of what we, what is selected out there, simply because of the things that are going on. Like thinking of like drug and alcohol, stuff like, you know, parameters. But I think taking those documents and seeing what, from what work has already been done.
Right.
And then seeing what kinda curriculums exist out there and just some of those costs associated with it. That gets a little tricky when we start talking about costs, cause if it's for like a shorter period, time, like, how, what does that look like?
I mean, we've purchased this, you know, this disparity for high school. I think it would be awesome to keep the same, you know?
Yep, so I think.
And it is a curriculum, you know?
What are those kind of suggestions?
You're right.
I wonder if we can maybe spend some time between the next committee of the whole and put together some mapping and? Cause some of it is, there's some autonomy for you as a teacher in there, but we wanna, you know?
Oh, yeah, I know that, yeah.
And we, you know the kids, and we want the kids to even have some input at times, like you did with eleventh grade, which is cool.
I think it's also along the same lines of like, what we've been doing over the last several years with like the ELA, right? So making, so there's a continuity between here to here, and I think that's part of what you're saying you would like to have.
Yep.
And I think that's really important, so that there's, you're building upon.
Yep. Yes, definitely.
Yes, your alignment of standards is definitely, yes, not bringing this back again this month, but coming back with recommendations in April.
Yes, and then, so now we've hit on that. My concerns are with this as, if we are adding this, is, I don't have a classroom, and I would really like my own classroom if I'm teaching one to five Health classes, you know, in different, you know, a space that, I, I, I know space is time, but I, you know, I'm taking rooms of teachers that have their prep, you know, so I'm kicking them out of their prep, you know, they've been nice enough the last two years, and then every single time I write that email, I close my eyes and send it, you know?
Do we have space available, or is that, is that the problem?
That's the problem.
Have it, okay.
That's the ongoing dilemma.
Yeah, um, and then the, you know, not having a budget either, um, specifically for Health classes separate from FIAED.
Yeah, that's agreed. Is that, is that in April? Is that when we start building the budgets? Is it, is that informa, like, if you had a projected budget by April, would that be?
I mean, I think my budget would be the same as any other, I don't, I don't know how they sent those out, I don't know what.
Yes, but I, I think the bigger thing is gonna be a scope and sequence, and what's gonna make sense here, so.
You also have class sizes on there.
Yeah, um, just looking at the class sizes, you know, you know, the fifth, fifth graders coming up, um, you know, just in the fifth grade class, you know, there's like fourteen, and then you add Eagles, uh, uh, the Eagles Academy, you know, sixth graders, Montessori is what I meant, because that was also what we talked about, the Montessori, sixth graders would be also in this class. So there potentially could be, you know, twenty-five to thirty kids.
They rode, do they rotate together as a class, or is that like, so like when I was, bigger school, right, there was a hundred and sixty in my class, is that, you know, it was shop, like in middle school, it was like shop, language, Health and, um, home act.
Yep.
And you did those for a quarter, and some of us would have shop, and then the next, you know, you're filtering through. Are we looking at doing something like that with these, some of these bigger classes that are coming up for the exploratory?
Yep, so currently there is four quarters, right, in three grades? So the biggest grade has had an option to split into two groups, okay? If we add a fifth one, that means that two out of the three grade levels could split into two groups. But for the sake of Health, the other things do not necessarily have to be divided by grade level, this would be one that may need to be.
Yeah.
If it can't be looked at as a three-year cycle class.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sierra, thanks for, thanks for pioneering this.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's very important, I just think there's a lot of these little things that definitely need to be figured out.
I'd like to go to the class on budget, shopping, healthy eating.
That's when we're starting, we just started it today, so, we are.
That's good stuff.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it.
Can we just ask for backstop pads or something?
Yeah, make it easy. So I, I put a slide on there, um, that kinda just summarized some of the things that Sierra said. So that, uh, point five credits required starting next year in eleventh grade. Right now, it is, there are twenty-six credits to graduate, so that means we would probably change the electives from eight point oh to seven point five. Still twenty-six credits to graduate, that's just where that half-credit takes of Health is now required, so it's out of that electives category that it's in now. And then we talked about the Health class being added to the, uh, rotation, we already talked about that. Um, I do think we should honor the wishes of the, all the work that the Human Growth and Development Committee did, so that when we do get kind of organized with the curriculum, they would appreciate probably looking over it, especially if it was H G and D topics.
That's another question, I thought that group disbanded after they turned in their final work and have not met again, is that true?
I don't think it disbanded, I think it's supposed to be a.
There's a lot of names on there that are.
No, no, that's what I mean, like, it's supposed to be an ongoing thing, but my, my understanding was the group that had been on that in their last presentation said, we have fulfilled the require, or the ask of the school board or the, the district, and cause I don't, my understanding is that group has not met since, so they haven't met in two years. So then if that's one of those things that, you know, part where we got landed with that in the first place is that, like Jolie Little said, that she thinks the last one was when she was in school, you know? Then, what, why are we not having that group meet on a either once or twice a year basis, just in general, to review things in general?
Well, this is a great occasion to do that.
No, it is, but I'm just saying, like, it brings up that, like, it would, I think it would be beneficial to have a group that meets at least once or twice a year versus like, only when we need that.
Yeah.
So that they, and that it's a consistent group of people, or even once a quarter, that are looking at some of those things that you're talking about. So that in the long run, it's not getting a whole new group of people together, doing a whole orientation onboarding type thing, and then getting into the things that need to be discussed, that it can be one of those, people come and go and?
And I think this is one of the things we learned with the Human Growth and Development Committee. Alan, if you wanna in your free time, look at the twenty-four fourteen policy. That part of it is, the district shall provide parents annually with an outline, but I believe it also talked about how often it was an annual meeting, I thought, just to make sure that we stayed on top of it, and that was kind of a commitment.
Every three years.
Every three, is that in years?
Yeah.
Okay, so we should, that's about coming up on that, actually. And perhaps the, the previous group would be a place to start with members.
So we can take a look at that.
Mm-hmm.
I wanna circle back just to something you mentioned. If the, the, the board, this entity approved this point five credits, did you approve in amending the graduation requirement numbers?
We didn't get that specific, they just approved the recommendations, yeah.
But that's, but that's, what I'm saying is, that's one thing that still has to come out of this. Are, are we changing the elective numbers to account for this additional point five?
That we need to do tonight, or at the, or next meeting?
I, I would suggest that we do that in the near future, so.
Can we put that on the?
Yes, we can.
Next meeting.
Agenda for our bigger meeting? I don't, whatever, I don't know.
The regular scheduled board meeting? Alright, sounds good.
And that isn't really an issue at the junior high level, so.
No, but it's like. It's the high school graduation requirements, so. I think even having a breakdown of the, in those, the documents of like what those requirements are for our seniors, just, I like visual stuff. It, it, it's something that has to be clear, and we have to communicate that to parents, what exactly the requirements are, and what we're expecting, so. Alright, thank you, Sierra.
Yep.
Okay. We'll move on to the shop and gym door replacement. I'm guessing that's all you, Mark.
Woo!
Mark, you have it, Sydney.
So, so Mark, you, you had the quote for the, for the door, but that, it didn't really split out a few different things there, correct?
Right, I had the one quote, you guys probably have it.
It's from Northern Door and Hardware?
For one, it would be for the walk door in the shop.
Yep.
And the frame, and then just one of the frames in the high school gym, is all he has on there. I wanted them separated out so that I could see what the cost of the frame for there, but none of that is installation, they don't do installations, so we have to.
So a threshold question for me is, do we, I mean, why do we need a new shop door?
Because it's rusting through.
Okay.
Security.
I mean, was that already discussed at facility?
Okay.
Yep.
I'm also in the process of getting, um, quotes for the overhead door in the shop, which is, it's been there since, I don't think it's ever been changed since sixty-eight. It's.
It's in rough shape.
The door.
I mean, we've, we've replaced all the hinges in it a couple times. The latch has been rebuilt two or three times, and it, it's just, it's time to be.
Those are the ones too that came up when we've been talking about, so like, security of the building.
Are we able to have windows?
So not to put the shop teacher on the, uh, you know, platform here, but I mean, do we have, do, do we know, would we have the capability of self-installing? Or is that beyond?
The overhead door, I would say you're gonna want somebody to install that.
Yeah, right, but just the break of the door.
The walk doors, I can do it, the trick is, is the timing on it, because it's not something that I can do over a couple days.
Yeah.
You want it done now, which requires, we're gonna have to cut those frames in pieces and break them out, cause they're concrete-filled frames.
Yeah, it's, it's a process.
It's not a, just a.
It's not an advanced shop, uh, class, no.
No, not to mention you have to, I mean, you've gotta build a barrier all around to contain, you gotta wear a breathing apparatus, because it's.
So could you do it? I mean, regardless of timing and everything?
I, I mean, I can do it.
Okay.
I've cut holes through the block walls and put in other door frames, it's just a matter of, I haven't actually removed one of these, I've talked to several people who have.
So, and they, they didn't provide you with a quote, quote and offer installation, just they don't do it?
They don't do it.
Okay.
So I would have to find a contractor that would.
Got it, got it, okay.
This is where, you know, previous life, that Mark and Johnson would come in and do that installation and whatnot, or, or some other contractor would be doing that, so. Is it one of those things that it's worth for us to hi- hire someone to come and install so that with like your regular scheduled expectations, and then also that it gets done?
I mean, it depends, it's, that's part of the whole thing, is what is it gonna cost versus time? You know, there are things that they're gonna charge a fortune for, well, then it's worth my time to do it.
Right.
And we hire somebody to do something else.
Yeah.
So you really have to go out and find out what that quote's gonna be, what that cost is gonna be.
So I think it would be good to get that quote, just to see.
And do we just have the one quote on the, the door itself, or is that?
Yeah, that's all I've gotten on it so far.
So no, is there anybody else?
There are other places that I can go to get.
Okay, I mean, it probably doesn't hurt to just check another source.
And we talked about the safety committee, the windows in the door, in, in both doors, so they could see?
I just, I was planning on just the walk door, because they should be able to see.
Right.
Okay.
Out the walk door, if somebody's outside the overhead door, they shouldn't open the overhead door.
Gotcha.
And are both of these like immediate fixes, like, you know, the next month, or the summer, the summer they?
I would prefer the summer, it's all, it's all summer stuff.
Okay.
Cause you're, you're talking probably a three, four day process.
Yeah.
You know, with removal and then prep and putting it in, so. Okay, very good. Any other questions on that one? So we need more quotes, or get a little more information as far as quotes and installation, is that what I'm understanding? Yep, and then the, the next one is food ser, there's two more, food service cooler repair replacement is the next one.
Alright, so the food service cooler has been giving us grief for several years. And I have a quote here for four thousand nine hundred dollars to repair it. But we've had them out, I'd say, six times in the last two years, working on that cooler. So I also have a quote for fourteen seven, I think, that was a replacement quote, cost for it. Now there again, I haven't gotten a second quote, cause they're the ones that put the box in, put all the. Now there again, I haven't gotten a second quote, cause they're the ones that put the box in, put all of it in, it's. I mean, not that I can't go looking for another one, but the more times you start changing. Who you're doing business with.
Yeah.
The more confusing it gets to try and get them.
Sure.
Yeah, I. Wise.
But I mean, it, it never hurts to get another quote just to see where it's at.
Yeah.
Even though you may still have, choose to go with a higher quote. If it is higher.
Is this also a summer or do you need this repaired immediately?
No, we'll get through till summer. I mean, it's gonna be a summer project.
Like, uh, as far as fiscal matters, is, I mean, cause, I mean, major challenges or?
Um, well, depends on how we're splitting the roof.
Right.
I was trying to think, I, I thought there was one other thing. Was it just the doors? Is that the other thing that we had in?
Yeah.
To do for the facilities for sure, but I can't remember if that full amount was in there.
Cause the roof, I think, was over two years.
So the roof we're doing over, so that part of it is this fiscal year and then part of it is the next fiscal year.
So depending on how we, we split that.
And then the doors, we were, I think, part of this year, if I remember right.
I don't, I don't know if they were or not, because we were putting, we put the, um. We talked about the bathrooms and we talked about the, um, emergency or the, uh.
ADA compliant?
Yes.
Right.
Door, so I think that's what we had talked about.
Yes.
You know, S R funds, we pretty much run our cores for, for that right now. What we have budgeted right now is pretty much picking up the rest of the. S R funds, cause I'm looking, could some of these things fall under there? Well, then that's just shifting those costs to something else. Um. The other thing you can, I mean. Couple of years ago, we ended up putting more into fund balance than we anticipated, you know? There's always going into a negative fund balance, not that that's something you wanna do.
Right.
But if you draw from some of that for some of those costs, that's.
I think, yeah, we, we, we've got some work to do to, to take a look at.
So bigger.
Well, we may need to set some priorities too.
And that's.
But to me, refrigeration, I would think it'd be right up.
Well, in the refrigeration.
Whatever else.
Right.
And in reality, the refrigeration, what, what we're spending to have them come and fix it all the time is very costly too, because they're. Their travel costs and their, so it's like very better just getting that done and over with.
Sierra, do you have a question?
I wanna drink more milk.
I saw your hand up by the corner of my eyes.
I mean, I do, but I don't know if it's not.
No, that was like, so like the, what the, so this committee has done in the past is has like a maintenance plan and then there's. Things that are like priorities for this year, but you, they always shift because.
Right.
Things like the refrigeration come up.
Right.
The, like, in this case, the roofs are like a top priority, cause they have exceeded their. Their timeframe and we don't wanna ga- gamble with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and then like the shop doors have become, as we've talked, security stuff like that really has become a top priority. And then.
Yeah, cause.
Refrigeration's new.
Right.
Um, but like the ADA.
Cause it can't all be priorities.
Like, and then doing some ADA stuff with like the front doors, just pretty.
And, and that's, that's what we're gonna be, I mean, we've been talking quite a bit as far as, you know, our priorities and just re- re-establishing that.
Yeah.
Based on our current assessments, so. Because it, the, the back doors weren't, they're not on there. Well, I shouldn't say that. Shop door is on the list, but thirty-five hundred. It wasn't taken into account.
The overhead door and then some of these others, and these others are coming up and, I mean, there again, we can delay the ones in the gym.
Yep.
I can patch the, I mean, what's happening is the center post is rotting off at the bottom.
Which, which is pretty typical.
Which I can repair that.
Yeah.
With the new ones, actually, the new, um, door frames that we were looking at putting in will have a removable center post. So then that could be replaced.
Or it rots, just replace.
Replace the center post, but these are not, so. You have to do the whole thing. But those could get delayed. I mean, they're not.
Yeah, right.
Absolute has to, but I mean, we're gonna start finding that around the building, cause they're all the same age. Those are just the first two that I've noticed that are.
And then that falls into that, sometimes it's gonna be in our best interest to do so- several of them at once, a little bit. To get a deal on either door frames and then a deal on the installation versus like having.
Dealing with contractors to come in and do it, yes.
Someone do one. This month and then one next month.
Right.
Chuck.
Okay, so then dishwasher replacement.
Did we miss the freezer? The freezer needs repaired too, which is a much less.
Food, okay. So it was, it was. So some kitchen, so some kitchen upgrades, basically.
Yeah, um. The dishwasher has been worked on a couple of times in the last. Couple of years here and every time they come in, they say this dishwasher is obsolete. You can't get parts for it anymore. So, it's working now? So I'm not saying that it's a necessity right now, I'm not, but I want it to be out there that. We could get a surprise on that one.
Right, and that, that is, th- there are very strict rules when it comes to sanitation.
Yep.
And that part of it is, is how hot your water is running and that's the whole piece for the, the dishwasher, so.
Right. But the biggest part about the dishwasher itself is the cycling.
Right.
If you can't run through it, you can't sanitize it.
Yeah, right.
And that's the.
So we need to start getting quotes.
Yeah, this is getting lots of information.
But ages.
Looking at that.
Yeah.
Right, five year.
And that's, and that, yeah, I, I think the big thing here is making sure that, you know, you're aware of, of some of these. Emerging issues and, and making sure that we have an understanding that our. Our priorities are shifting slightly and, and how we manage that, uh, budget-wise and. Completion-wise is gonna be critical, so.
Yep. All right.
Thank you for everything you invest here. So grateful.
I think that's it for now, but we've, yeah, we've got some.
Run.
Chuck. Any other questions from our?
Anything from our?
No.
Okay.
And then the la- our last one is just meeting date. Um, because our next committee of the whole would be the Monday that is for spring break.
Right, right after Easter.
Right after Easter, sorry, and then I believe our, in April, we've had our regular scheduled board meeting, the last on the fourth. The fifteenth would be the, so you're asking for Tuesday, April second or Monday, April fifteenth?
Chuck, where, where, where this runs into an issue is, is the eighth, which is the second Monday. Uh, the governance board meeting already has their meeting set and then, uh, if I'm trying to impact. Town or village meeting, whichever that is, that evening, um, that could run into some conflicts here, so.
That's an Easter Monday. That's just a day off.
There's, there's no school and so we've typically not had meetings when there's not school.
Chuck.
Because. Some of our employees may be taking.
I, I always heard of Easter Sunday, but Easter Monday, I.
They get Good Friday and, and then the Monday after.
It's a four-day weekend.
She can go to Grandma's.
That's kind of the.
But they don't get okay Tuesday off? Sorry. Uh, and then fifteenth is tax day.
It is.
I, I'd rather not do Tuesday the second.
So I cannot do Tuesday nights.
So what's, what was the alternative, the fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
Granted, it, it's a, a quick turnaround. It's a week turnaround.
To the next.
To the board meeting, but that's, there's nothing wrong with that.
Well, so is what we've had tonight will shift some decision to the April board meeting, but nothing will do.
So, so.
In the committee of the whole, in April, we would do like the following week necessarily?
We would make decisions, so that just, that would truncate our time, that just give us a week to answer any questions, get additional information necessary for any decisions to be made in April. Okay, so. Cause that, that's the, the whole purpose of the committee of the whole is, is to give information and, and, and give recommendations.
For decision-making at.
Yeah.
At, at the regular board meeting and also if there are questions that come up, it gives you that opportunity to come back with answers and, and whatnot.
Yeah.
Necessary for decision-making, so.
When is election is April?
Oh, we, okay, I'm sorry, we have a, the eighteenth of March, we have a board, okay.
Right, so we have.
I was thinking, why, why have two of these in a row before the next one, but we do have a, a board meeting.
Right.
In, in March, yeah.
March eighteenth, so, okay. Never mind.
So I have a question.
So Tuesday, April ninth, I believe is.
To, what was it? Monday, what?
Monday, the fifteenth is when we're gonna meet.
Fifteenth, and the regular meeting is the twenty-second?
That's correct. That is for sure.
Thursday.
You have a question, Sierra?
Do I need to bring any of this to the regular school board meeting?
No. No, it'll be the next committee of the whole meeting on the fifteenth of March.
So what, what do I, what do you need from me this next month?
I got it, yep.
We'll, we'll take care of it.
I got you.
Well, I, I understand saying we'll take care of that, but it's been two years, you know, I just, I want to make sure.
Let's meet tomorrow. We can meet tomorrow if you want.
Yes.
Get a plan hatched out.
That's what I need to know. What else I needed to do?
Nothing tonight.
Go home and eat a donut.
Stop thinking about it till tomorrow.
Netflix and sleep.
So remind me, so election is April ninth, right?
It is.
And what is the earliest we can swear the, isn't there a certain date that we can swear the people in that, especially why we set the date later?
It is, yeah.
Just the next.
No.
Board meeting afterward?
It's the board meeting, but there's a date in April that it has to be before.
Right.
And, and after.
Right, and I'll, I'll get that information too, so.
Cause that's what I'm wondering if, if the twenty-second.
Cause we've always done it the last Monday of April.
Could we use the?
No.
Committee. When, uh?
That's too soon.
It's too soon.
April fifteenth.
Yeah.
So it's too soon.
There's a date, there's dates that you are required to do the swearing in with him.
Okay, I think it fit within our.
Because it has to be.
Regular board meeting last year.
It was, but our regular board meeting in April is usually a different date. So like.
Because.
Becau- so like most of the time, we meet the third Monday of the month for our regular board meeting and in April, it's like the fourth.
Right, right, right.
Monday of the month because of the swearing in.
Fourth Monday in April, so what is the four?
So last year it was on the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second is the fourth Monday.
Yeah, so we pushed it off. Cause it should have been on the seventeenth.
So that should work, yeah.
Of last year.
So, so April and October are two months, like so October because of the budget stuff, we meet at the end of October. April is, you move it back because of swearing in. So we're good, which is good, because I'm gonna be gone the last week of April and.
Do we need a mot- um.
So.
Or do you do that, the board meeting, the motion for moving the April fifteenth one?
We need to do that tonight.
It needs to happen.
So I need a motion to, um. For the committee of the whole to meet on Monday, April fifteenth at six P M. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, motion carries. I can't. And that's it, right, so. Yeah, are we closed session out? I need a motion to move into closed session.
Second.
I move, we convene into closed session.
All right.
Do you want me to read all of that?
No.
Okay.
A motion, second.
The second.
All in favor?